Okay.
Good time.
No. I'd like to call the meeting to order if we could all please rise and for our pledge allegiance, all rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Khan.
Here.
Trustee Minks.
Here.
Trustee Sheba.
Here.
Trustee Phil.
Here.
Trustee Travis.
Here.
Trustee Whitco.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you very much. I need an approval of our minutes of our regular meeting from December 10th, 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 10th, 2024.
Second, motion made by trustee Minks, seconded by trustee Whitco. Any discussions, questions, clarifications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, some special reports tonight. First up, we have the appointment of Dennis Kennedy as fire chief. Dennis, if you want to meet me there down by the podium. Bring up your fam. Everybody's so quiet, make some noise. Tonight, actually got it shut there. Everyone can hear me anyway, I'm a loud mouth. Tonight on our agenda, we have the appointment of Dennis Kennedy as our next fire chief. Prior to asking for a motion in the second to appoint Chief Kennedy, I want to share a little bit about the background and passion for Morton Grove. Dennis has been in the fire service for the last 26 years and has been with the village for the last 20 years. There we go. Thank you. For the past four years, he has served as department's district chief of administration under Chief Ensign. He has also served in various capacities throughout his career, including EMS chief officer, serving as an instructor at the Fire Academy, and serving as the logistic team manager for the mutual aid box alarm system, Division III. We've been very fortunate that Dennis has been serving as our fire chief since Chief Ensign retired on January 3rd. With that in mind, I would like to ask for a motion, the second motion, to appoint Dennis Kennedy as the fire chief for the village of Morton Grove.
I'll make the motion to appoint Dennis Kennedy as the fire chief of the village of Morton Grove. Second.
Motion's made by trustee Minks, seconded by trustee Travis, I believe. Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, good, very good. Dennis? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Dennis M. Kennedy.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And the rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of fire chief of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of fire chief of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability. I'll keep it very brief because I know it's such a busy night tonight, but I just want to thank, first of all, all of my family. Obviously, without their support, all of this would be hard. But I want to thank the village and the department and everybody, a lot of people in here who've supported me over the years. Between the village of Morton Grove and the department, I was afforded a lot of opportunities to get my career to where it is. I can't think of a better place, better people, better firefighters to spend it with and lead into the future. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, we're just going to keep going down the swearing-in ropes here. Dennis? Where's Dennis? Oh, all right. Okay, that's good. I actually thought they were here for the board meeting, Dennis, but I mean, chief?
We should lock the doors. You guys can have fun without us, you guys stick around.
There you are. Just going to give it one second here. All right. So we have another promotion tonight. This will be of Commander Johnson to our deputy chief role that was vacated by our current chief, Mike Simo. Dennis Johnson is a 15-year veteran in the Morton Grove Police Department, starting his career on September 21st of 2009. Growing up in the western suburbs, Dennis graduated from Addison Trail High School in 2006 and then obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Lewis University in 2009. He obtained a master's of business administration degree with a concentration in human resource management from Lewis University in 2019. Dennis spent the first three years of his career in patrol, serving in multiple capacities, including field training officer, evidence technician, and defensive tactics instructor. In 2013, Dennis became a special operations officer in the Field Services Division and served as an evidence technician with the Major Crash Assistance Team. In 2014, Dennis became a detective and was selected to serve on the North Regional Major Crimes Task Force. Dennis was promoted to sergeant in January of 2021, served for a short time as a patrol sergeant, and returned to the Detective Bureau as the supervisor in May. Dennis was promoted to commander in January of 2022 and continued to supervise the Detective Bureau. In January 2024, Dennis was chosen to be the task force commander for the North Regional Major Crimes Task Force. Dennis is a graduate of the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command and will be attending the FBI National Academy in 2025. Dennis, we're ready to go here, if you just want to raise your right hand. There you go. Jeez, I was proud of my son playing the drums. I state your name.
I, Dennis V. Johnson.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of deputy chief of the police of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of deputy chief of police of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
Just really quick, I'll just introduce the family that's here with me today. To my right is my lovely wife, Ray. I couldn't do any of this stuff without her. A lot of late nights at work, phone calls in the middle of the night, but she puts up with it. There's a lot of family and friends here, thank you for coming. In the front two rows, most importantly, my mom and dad, Vicki and Dennis, my brother-in-law Bobby, my in-laws, Carolyn and Mike, my wife's grandparents, Mike and Marcia, her great-aunt Julie, my brother Andrew, and my sister-in-law Vanessa. So thanks, everybody, for coming. Mayor, Village Board, thank you very much.
You can call me Dan. All right, we have two more promotions tonight. One more left for me, and then I'll bring Commissioner Simkins to do the final one. Anthony Anderson is a 19-year veteran of the Morton Grove Police Department, starting his career on September 29th, 2005, and he was joined us from another police agency. Growing up in the northwest suburbs, Anthony graduated from Lake Zurich High School in 1996, and he joined the United States Army serving as a military police officer. Thank you for your service, Anthony. Anthony obtained his associate's degree from Harper College in 1998, a bachelor of criminal justice in 2016 from Columbia Southern University, and a master's of justice administration from Tiffin University in 2018. Anthony spent the first three years of his career in patrol, serving in multiple capacities, including evidence technician and breath and analyst operator. In 2009, Anthony became a detective in the Field Services Division and later joined the Illinois State Police Narcotics and Currency Interdiction Task Force, where he served as an inspector working complex narcotics and money laundering cases until 2018. Anthony was promoted to sergeant in September of 2018, and he has served as a patrol sergeant on the 3 to 11 shift. Will you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Anthony E. Anderson.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the officer of commander of the police of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of commander of the police of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability. Just real quick, I'd like to thank my family. That's my mom, this is my son, that's her fiance, Patrick, and that is my wife, who's been putting up with my nonsense for 22, almost 22 years. I appreciate all my friends, all the past and former members that are here, and everybody that I worked with through my course of nascent, I had a really good show in here, and I appreciate everybody showing up. A lot of other different agencies are represented here for all of us. I thank you all. It's awesome to work with a great group of men and women. Thank you.
I'm going to call down Commissioner Simkins, but before I turn it over to Mike, I think it's, as you can see from the credentials that I've read here tonight, we have a very solid police department here, and we should be very proud of the level of professionalism that they provide. Firemen are gone, or they left already, but I was going to say something about that as well, as you can see all these fires out west, you know, these people put their neck on the line every day. This police department is incredible. The men and women here are, I guarantee you, our Morton Grove residents can rest very solidly every night, knowing that these people are on the streets during the day, same thing. Couldn't be prouder of all of them, all these promotions, I could not be happier for, but again, it just shows you, the pool that we're pulling from now, and if you notice, these are internal promotions, there's a reason for that, thanks to Chief Simo, Chief Weitzel, and Commissioner Simkins and his team when they're doing these hires many, many years ago. Mike's been hiring, I think, Mike, I think you've hired every police officer at this point. You look good, though, Mike. Actually, you look like a million bucks. But, that being said, again, I just wanted to make sure that people realize just how great this police department is and the professional level continues to shine, and it will continue to shine with these promotions and also the one Mike's going to do right now. So with no further ado, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Simkins.
Ty, you want to come up here? You want to invite anybody else up here, too? Chief Weitzel, you want to come down as we do this? Connie, do you want to step down here? You want to introduce who you have here?
Yes, my mom, Linda, and my daughter Reagan.
All right, welcome. Like to echo some of those sentiments, mayor, how proud I am of all the gentlemen and the department is, just gives us on the commission reconfirmation that we're kind of doing a few things right around here. But next up is the newest sergeant of the department, Ty Rubio. If you don't mind, I'll read a little bit about him. Use my glasses these days. Tyler Rubio is a 12-year veteran of the Morton Grove Police Department, starting his career on March 26, 2012. Growing up in the northwest suburbs, Ty graduated from Palatine High School in 2005 and then was a student athlete and obtained his bachelor's degrees in criminology and psychology from the University of Illinois at Chicago in 2010. Ty spent the majority of his career on patrol, serving in multiple capacities, including field training officer, evidence technician, and juvenile officer. In 2019, Ty was chosen to be a member of the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System Mobile Field Force, where he served for six years and just finished his tenure as part of the arrest team. In 2023, Ty served as a class supervisor for Class BA 23-03 at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy, and he's the proud father of the strongest girl he knows. You just met Reagan. And you introduced your mom. All right. I'm going to ask you to step up, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tyler J. Rubio.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the police sergeant of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
Of the police sergeant of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
I'm sure you will.
Nice, Reagan.
Thanks, mayor. And that'll conclude my report, mayor.
Congratulations, man, truly appreciate you. Thank you.
I don't need to speak. Y'all set? Okay, so at this point, I'm going to tell people, what I always tell people, is if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, feel free.
Yeah, it is.
It's not going to be much more exciting than what we just had, so I'll give everybody about a minute that wants to get out, and everybody else that stays, you're welcome to stay.
Where you guys going?
Where's everybody going?
Where you guys going? We're having pizza after this. We're having pizza after this, don't run. Oh, it's a clean house.
Who are you looking for?
I want to see Dean's son-in-law is here. His name is Brad, we used to play softball together, but he's the chief in, I want to say, Deerfield?
What's his name?
I thought I saw him. Uh, Brad.
Brad?
Yeah. He's Dean's son-in-law.
My old, my old.
Maybe he's not there.
Chief is, was here. Jesse Barnes.
Jesse Barnes?
Jesse Barnes is the chief of Skokie. You deserve it.
Yeah. We are.
Thank you.
Chuck, happy new year, brother, how are you?
Happy new year.
You too. There he is.
I like your updates.
Oh, good.
I just wanted to let you know. I like all the updates.
Give me a second. I can say that, right?
Hi, Dean. How are you?
No problem. Okay, we're going to proceed, there are no public hearings tonight. We do have two plan commission reports, one, PC 24-08, request for approval of an amendment to a special use permit for the operation of an indoor recreational facility at the property commonly known as 6451 Main Street in Morton Grove, and we have PC 24-09, which will request for an amendment to a special use permit to allow the expansion of an existing daycare facility at the property commonly known as 5633 Dempster Street in Morton Grove, and these will both be presented by Brandon Nolan.
Good evening. I'll be introducing two plan commission cases tonight. PC 24-08 is a request for approval of a special use permit for the existing industrial building at 6451 Main Street to accommodate a pickleball facility in the M2 District. The pickleball facility would occupy a portion of the building not being utilized by the primary tenant, Gil Sewing. The facility would feature six pickleball courts, seating areas, and a bar on the first floor. The second floor would feature additional seating and could eventually accommodate a golf similar or similar virtual sport amenity. The applicant also received a variation for parking and is in the process of reconfiguring and expanding parking at the site to accommodate both uses. This received a unanimous approval by the plan commission. PC 24-09 is a request to amend an existing special use permit ordinance 17-25 to allow the expansion of existing daycare, Poco Loco School Incorporated. The existing single-family home and garage at 5633 Dempster would be demolished and replaced by a new playground and four-spaced parking lot. The expansion would also enable the applicant to remove the playground facility currently installed in the primary parking lot off of Major Avenue and restripe three additional spaces there. The addition of seven new parking spaces would allow the applicant to request that the maximum enrollment be increased to 160 students, which is the same capacity they are approved for by Illinois DCEFS. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Poco Loco, I would request that the bollards be put on the inside of the fence, and I think that the owners said that they would be amendable to do that, and with the society the way it is today, I think the bollards being put on the outside gives somebody who has a sick mind a chance to step up there and do some mischief. I'm looking out for, I'm not looking out for the fence, I'm looking out for the kids. So that's my comment on that. And I have a comment on the other one on Main Street. My comment on that is, I hope the owners are going to take care of the edge of the forest preserves. I've walked out there before the snow, and it's got a lot of trash down along the sidelines, and I hope that we put that part of their agreement. Those are my two points. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others? Nope, thanks, Brian. Good job. President's report, not too, excuse me, not too much to report, back at business here beginning of the year, 2025. There will be another Citizens Police and Fire Academy. It'll be a 10-week program, this will be starting on March 19th, and it will be on Wednesday nights from 6:30 to 8:30. This program will give participants an understanding of our departments, along with a working knowledge of law enforcement and firefighting. To learn more, please visit the village's website, www.mortongroveil.org. You can also get any other updates on the village website as far as other doings in the village. We also, holidays are over, believe it or not, as we know. From now until February 1st, couple weeks here, the village will be collecting holiday lights for recycling. The lights must be disconnected from any decorative items, and the lights can be deposited in the recycling bin located next to the finance counter here at Village Hall. There will be a 50/50 tree planting program in place from now until April 1st, 2025. The village will be accepting applications for the 50/50 tree planting program, where interested residents can request a tree in the parkway near their home, with the resident paying $60 for the tree and the village paying the other $60. There are a variety of species available, and to participate, please visit Village Hall and submit an application. I'm sure that makes trustee Phil very happy.
More than happy.
Right?
Yep.
I have no other formal report tonight. Clerk's report?
No report, your honor.
Staff report, village administrator.
Just briefly, the 2025 Resident Handbook is available to the public, so if you're interested, please visit our website, it is available for download on the top right of the homepage, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, corporate counsel. Thank you. Reports by trustee, trustee Khan.
Thank you, your honor. I do have an ordinance 25-01, which is an introduction tonight. This is the first reading for this ordinance, and this ordinance will be amending Title I, Chapter 11, Section 4, entitled Fees for Specific Permits, Licenses, Certificates, and Services of the Municipal Code of the Village of Morton Grove to update the fees for water rates and removal of the yard waste stickers. And I guess there's not going to be a voting on this since it's the first reading, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Khan. Trustee Minks?
No report, your honor.
Thank you. Trustee Sheba?
No report, your honor.
Thank you. Trustee Phil?
Yes, your honor. I have a resolution 2501, it's authorizing the execution of a It's authorizing the execution of a service contract with GM Trucking Incorporated for the 2025 material hauling program. I move we accept Resolution 2501.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Phil, seconded by trustee Minks to approve Resolution 25-01. Is there any comments, discussions, clarifications? Questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a vote.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Resolution 25-01 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Thank you.
End of my report.
Thank you very much. Trustee Travis?
Thank you. I have Resolution 25-02, authorizing the purchase of three Ford police interceptor vehicles from Curry Motors Fleet in Frankfurt, Illinois, through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Bid Program. Every three years, high-mileage squad vehicles are replaced to ensure that key equipment used by police department officers do not fail during duties as public safety first responders. The squad vehicles are used 24 hours per day and must be maintained in excellent condition. The village participates in the Northwest Municipal Conference's Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, which allows the village to take advantage of volume and group pricing discounts. The Suburban Purchasing Cooperative awarded the bid contract to sell 2025 Ford police interceptors to Curry Motors in Frankfurt, Illinois. This resolution will authorize the village to purchase three Ford police interceptor squad cars from Curry Motors in Frankfurt pursuant to the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number 204. I move that we accept Resolution 25-02 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Travis, seconded by trustee Phil. Any discussions, questions, clarifications? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a vote.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Resolution 25-02 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Oh, end of my report. Sorry.
Thank you, trustee Travis. Trustee Whitco?
Thank you. Tonight I have Ordinance 25-02, approving a special use permit for an indoor recreational facility at 6451 Main Street. Brandon already read the details into the record, and there is no action tonight as it is a first read. And then I have Ordinance 25-03, approving an amendment to a special use permit granting the expansion of an existing daycare facility at the property commonly known as 5633 through 49 Dempster Street. Again, Brandon read this into the record. It's the first read, so no action tonight, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Any other business brought before the board tonight? Hearing none. Presentations of warrants. Trustee Khan.
Thank you. I'd like to present a warrant register for January 14, 2025, in the amount of $970,972.05, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrant register as presented tonight.
Second.
Need a second, people? Oh, Travis? Sorry, he's in the middle of a cough there, Constance.
It's okay.
Motion made by trustee Khan, seconded by trustee Travis. Any discussions, questions, clarifications? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a vote.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
The warrants pass as presented 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Residents' comments on agenda items. Eric Patters.
I wanna give a shout-out to Steve and his assistant manager, Antonio, and everybody at U-Haul. I removed all my effects from Morton Grove effective yesterday, and it's just the beauty about Morton Grove that people don't understand. When you deal with the corporate people, it's not like dealing with people face-to-face in Morton Grove. And I am gonna miss everybody here, and I just wanna thank everybody for the time that I spent here. I'm just gonna move on into the sunset, as they say, but wish you the best of luck becoming mayor and seeing what you're gonna do with the Village of Morton Grove, like I said, with the chief, and, you know, you just leave Morton Grove a better place. I did get to meet the global marketing director, Chuck, if you wanna check this out. I'd recommend on the western side of Morton Grove, that would compete more with the Niles McDonald's, because what's gonna happen is these people are taking over. They've got a new Mexican concept that has 200 stores in Australia. They're now opening five stores here in Chicagoland. They'll be expanding throughout Chicagoland. Their next big location is Displanes, where Morton... Or I'm sorry, where McDonald's was formed. I have a childhood friend whose father was an attorney originally with Ray Kroc. They're scared of these people. Guzman and Gomez, and it's guys from New York. They went to Australia, all over the country, and now they're coming back home. Other than that, I got some books here just to kinda let you guys know my next chapter's moving on. This was by my dad's brother-in-law. It's called Bullshit. The Media as Power Brokers in Presidential Elections by Jeffrey Gale. It was like his dissertation out in California. And then I had a cousin on my mom's side, and I remember her grandmother, 'cause she was like a great aunt to me. This is The Smoldering City, Chicagoans and the Great Fire, and it's the historical concepts and everything that happened in the rebuilding of Chicago. So I look forward to eventually writing about my adventures in Morton Grove as a little kid and moving my stuff out via U-Haul. That brings a lot of revenue to the Village of Morton Grove. People don't understand. They come, they jump out of these trucks, they wanna get something to eat, they wanna stay in a hotel, they're tired. It's called economic stimulus. They might not bring the revenue through the boxes and the tape. They do pay their property taxes, but it's... They come to Morton Grove, people are like, wow, this is a pretty cool city. Like, I might wanna live here. And that's the beauty of U-Haul and the revenue that they bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any other residents' comments? Hearing none. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by trustee Minks, seconded by trustee Whitco to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned 7:36.